Good afternoon. You want to apologize? Just give me my back to you, but I've been asked to begin this meeting because trustee Alexander has another responsibility, but we'll be here shortly. But anyway, I know a lot of you have families to go to and meals to eat, and we'll do the best we can and enjoy this good weather as we are here today. We're beginning this meeting today at it looks like four thirty-one, thirty-two, and this meeting is being livestreamed and recorded. And at this point, we will do a roll call. Let me see here. Let me share again. Instead, it was right here. Oh, yeah, I can do this. Thank you very much. Trustee Haley. Trustee Del Porto.
Here.
Trustee Ross.
Here.
Trustee Smith.
Present.
Trustee Tyler.
Here.
Trustee Virtue also on Zoom.
Here.
You, trustee Wallace.
Here.
And our famous student trustee Zingger.
Here.
Very, very good. Thank you so much. At this point, I would like to have the pledge being led today by trustee Del Porto. Thank you very much. I would like to lead this to the blood of the states of America and to the republic which stands one nation, unbroken, indivisible, infinite. As our tradition, I would ask for a moment of silence for the women and men of the United States military, who were serving both domestically and internationally to help preserve our American freedoms and way of life. Also, thank you to our police, firemen, first responders, and others who daily jeopardize their lives to make our community safer. We all owe them a deep debt of gratitude. Thank you. Please be seated. I'd also like to personally welcome the following guests that are here, and thank you for being here. The professional staff of SUNY Niagara. And at this point, I do not see the person from the Niagara, but all other interested parties. And I also want to thank all of you for taking the time from your busy schedules to be here. And again, I want to also special thanks to our excellent secretary, Mr. Secretary to the President, for organizing and providing our board packets in such an efficient manner. To remind all in attendance, our attempt today is to conduct business in efficient manner with the intention of a reasonable journal. We have a robust agenda today, and we'll need all of your cooperation. Thank you very much. At this time, are there any public comments? Didn't see any that's listed. But with great pride, today, I welcome a personal friend, Dr. Martha Kershaw, Dean of the College of Nursing, Physical and Allied Health. Dr. Kershaw is new dean of the College of Nursing, Physical and Allied Health. Her start date for the college was September eighth, two thousand twenty-five. And from a personal note, I said I was going to say this, but we go back to the old days at the Lockwood YMCA, last century, when she used to swim on my swimming team. But so congratulations on your versatility here. What we would like you to do, if you would like to just share with everyone here a little bit about yourself and what your future is here at our college.
Do you want me to position myself?
You're right there, but it's up to you. Wherever you feel comfortable. I did.
So I'm Dr. Martha Kershaw. I prefer to be Martha. If you're doubting me, I'm more comfortable with that. I come to you actually from Lockwood. However, I took a little stint in Connecticut, where I was there to open a Bachelor of Science in Nursing program at a small private college. Prior to that, I was at Dayton University, where I was the Chair of Nursing over eight programs. We had a ninth by the time I left, and we also had four graduate certificates. My experiences are really in online education. I have about fifteen years in nursing education at the associates, bachelors, and masters levels. I've also been an IDO program. So I've been around a little. My clinical experience is critical care and oncology. I spent about ten years at Roswell Park in a staff development in a nursing role, and I also spent about eleven years at University of Rochester, Maryland. I'm away from the mother, a three-year-old daughter who just informed me she's getting married at eleven AM on Halloween. That's on her dream. I won't be here that day. I'll have to be there.
What are some of your goals?
Well, I really think that we need to, a couple of things I talked about in my interviews that align with a strategic plan, actually have to do with making our programs more accessible to adult students. I know that there's tons of calls to add the programs in Lockwood, but I that are never my experiences. I also would do increase the diversity of our body to be more aligned with our area. I actually would start showing a movie screening. Actually, I made eye with Niagara University to do this, because Chris Cerny was there, and I worked together at U of L, and we talked about this before I moved here. She and I had talked about showing a movie called Everybody's Born. That really down to the beginnings of how people had to do the health professions, specifically nursing, as told by people who have had have raised racism. And so I think how are we thinking of the rounds? Where are we shuffling on and really getting to when do we need to make our body work? So that we can then make the body of nursing work. I think we have a goal there. So those are meaningful.
Thank you.
I have to re-open them, Grant, too. I can't ignore them.
Really do want to welcome you. It's a very critical part of our institution, and you're a valuable asset. It's a pleasure to have you here.
Thank you. I'm pleased.
Thank you very much. Today, we have presentations. And today, we have Randall Jumper, partnered with the Andino Group, providing a pre-audit planning presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I think I might have this in there. I have so much. I appreciate the time today to go through this. Really, definitely for the board, and it's really one of the critical steps of the internal control structures, right? You know, we get hired by the board that's gauges us to work. We work with management of a process, but it's important to develop that relationship and that connection, you know, at this point. So, you know, I appreciate giving us the time to come in and do that. We kind of took like a summary, which is on page four of the document, just highlighting some colleges activities this year, which I think everyone here, you know, fully aware of, but fall and spring tuition, I think, more for physical point five exceeded budgeting. See the budget, I've seen that really across many of the colleges that I that I work with. So again, hopefully that trend continues for your turnover. In positions controller and PT of services, I see super anti here, and Kelsey and the others as well. Thank for those of the field, and everyone's getting up to speed there. During the monitor, change of title, things that are going on from a funding perspective. Hard to know exactly where they will impact and where they'll land, but again, always something that we're keeping on the forefront. You guys are keeping on the forefront. And then Dr. Galley, is that right? Now, he's working out a new plan for the college as well, which I think is going to be targeted for November. To be a from, from the audit perspective, our planning is not underway. We will all talk about the timeline shortly, but next month, we'll get really into the nitty gritty of planning the audit. We've already identified the risks for the audit, really, or consistent with the Lockwood last year. Nothing really is to our perspective that might change that. We do affirm our independence with the college, which is important. We obviously have to be independent through our work. And there's one new accounting standard that's implementing this year with the composite absences, and I'll work with Kelsey Kraft to kind of implement that with you. Looking at the art approach, talking through that, our objectives, obviously, are to perform the audit in accordance with generally accepted audit standards as well as government audit standards. And we also require a single audit because of the federal funding that you receive throughout throughout the year, your student financial aid. We will render an opinion on the financial statements in accordance with those standards. And we also do the audits, the components, the foundation, as well as housing. And then we mainly know is our audit doesn't really leave management or the responsibility for the statements themselves. We help you kind of discharge that responsibility and guide you, but ultimately, we need the responsibility. And we do consider internal control part of our process. We don't opine on it. So we look at those controls to determine how they impact our ability or your ability to report your financial numbers, whether it's from an information technology perspective or manual controls, and we do that as part of our process. Looking at the page on page seven, risk assessment. Everything we do in an audit is risk-based, and we use a top-down risk-based approach to do that, along with the judgment that we have relative to our experience, work with other colleges, et cetera. And there's basically three different types of risks, instead of fraud risk, in terms of what could happen within the organization. There's any significant risks that might be related to a specific audit area, and what we call normal risks that are just in existence within the organization. And kind of diving into the deeper on the next page. Fraud risk really is something that not unique to Niagara. It's really germane to every audit that's done. There's always a risk of missing or out of controls, where that's the area where something could happen, considering it's one of the purposely over at So we consider that, and we have certain tests that we perform, you know, kind of looking for that. And those are identified on the slide, testing journal entries, looking at assumptions related to estimates, et cetera. Revenue reduction is also another significant risk. The overstatement revenue was always something that organizations would attempt to do to make their numbers look better. So we're going to look at the controls related to that, as well as testing certain components of that process to make sure that everything is done properly. The next slide kind of outlines our audit team. We do have, for the most part, consistent team, a team there with myself as the main department. Karen Lynch is our audit partner that oversees the single audit. We do have a new senior overseeing engagement this year through Collins. He works with JCC. And then down below are a lot of the, what I call our advisory components of our team. One for IT, one for quality control, and one is an advisory partner that really I utilize, you know, as things come up from the engagement. Page ten is our approach, so timeline, October, November, where we sit right now is the planning phase. Again, meeting with managers, meeting with the board to talk about these things. The audit itself is going to happen between November and December. We did kind of shift that timing a little bit. Also, and I worked on looking at that, giving her a little bit more time this year to close, get comfortable with the process. And it will be in here starting December first to work on that. And then completion in January. So we're not changing the end reporting time. You still will be here as we typically have. We're just shifting the start line, which I don't think is going to impact that whatsoever, and I think will give us a, you know, a much more complete set of numbers as we start for that process. And then, again, talking about the art approach, fraud itself, and we were required to make certain inquiries of the board. As I said at the outset, this is part of the introduction, you know, kind of giving you the introduction of who I am, letting you know that at any point you need to reach out to me, you can do so, either through Kelsey, through Mr. Grantie, whatever makes sense. And fraud is a legal concept. It's not a legal concept. So we don't determine whether fraud exists. We will assist and determine if it looks like something's unusual. And there's really two types of frauds that auditors consider. One is fraudulent reporting, and the other one is misappropriation of assets. So our steps will kind of look at that. Again, I'm not pointing that out because something exists. That's just part of the audit process. I want to make that clear. A few other things to point out, just in terms of our communications independence, as I said, we are independent of the organization. We haven't identified any instances of noncompliance with all the regulations through that process. We discussed things with management throughout the year, and those discussions are not a condition of our retention. We retain this part of the process and rolling process there. And then, you know, again, we need to reach out to someone on the board at some point during the audit process later on, have a specific discussion. Don't be afraid of that. It's just program and process that we do want to hear from you, and you will ask us some questions from that perspective. And then the rest of this document, which you can look at at your leisure, it's really just some trending topics that we're seeing through our work in some other areas, you know, that there's things that we can help you with, like available for you through that process. Many questions, but happy to address them.
I was going to ask, a year ago, we were having difficulty with SAF forms for students, which affected eligibility, and that you see anything in the process that would affect this year's?
Haven't seen that many yet.
No. Yeah. Thank you. Any other questions?
Well, Randy, I want to thank you so much, and we'll look forward to working with you in the future, and keep up the great work. We believe a lot of confidence in you. So thank you very much. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Our third and last presentation will be from Kelly Twikuski, adjunct instructor of chemistry, presenting on her IRC grant topic titles, update of fundamentals of chemistry and inorganic chemistry laboratory. And thank you, Kelly, for your presentation.
Thank you. Thanks.
Okay, it's fine. We're fine. Yeah, thanks.
Okay. Good afternoon. My name is Kelly. This summer, with a 2025 instructional resource plan, I updated six chemistry lab experiments for two general chemistry courses for use by all chemistry instructors of those courses. Last year, I had an IRC grant. I used it to modify a total of six experiments, the goal of which was to align lab work with course content, introduce important techniques, and diversify student lab skills. Procedures and methods were modified, and the labs were implemented over the course of the year, fall, spring, and summer. In continuation of that work with this grant, I researched and modified six additional experiments. I'd like to outline a segment of that project here. This year, the criteria for choosing experiments to update involved asking, is there an opportunity to improve experimental results while also increasing students' understanding of chemical reactions and processes? By implementing a new method of data collection and graphical analysis, I evaluated existing experimental procedures to single out those that relied on traditional tools for data collection, such as glass thermometers, large digital pH meters, and spectrophrometers, which often need repair, are expensive to replace, and take up a lot of lab bench space. I also considered whether students had some experience with these traditional instruments before I replaced them. I wanted to diversify their skills and expose them to a variety of equipment where possible. The goal was to decide where tools could be replaced with new sensors and an app for faster data-driven analysis. The next slide shows a Renea LabQuest three data logging device with touchscreen. And it connected, it connects to a temperature probe in the first picture. The probes are interchangeable, so in place of a temperature probe, you can use a pH meter or a device for measuring absorbance of a solution, et cetera. The units are wireless and rechargeable, and the department already had these instruments and the attachable probes ready for use. We just weren't not really putting them into practice. So I asked, can we simplify the data collecting process in some of these general chemistry labs to enable students to collect and then automatically convert their data to a form ready for analysis to reach their end goal? This replaced taking all the data and recording it, and then record, and then taking the data and putting it into another form. Like, sometimes we use paper graphs. Sometimes we could use Excel or Google Sheets. So we wanted to revise our written and digital instruction materials accordingly, and also our methods of data code. I conducted trial runs of the chosen experiments with the new equipment and the chemical solutions I had available. I needed to do multiple runs in the lab to establish initial parameters, set up the lab class, and identify any issues like, were we using the right glassware? Did we already have the glassware we needed? And could we change that out easily and quickly without purchasing anything new? So that's the second picture there, which is a freezing point depression. To utilize LabQuest graphing capability so that students can not only report data like temperature or pH with the probes, but also monitor the progress of a reaction over time, I needed to first research and then perform trials in the lab, and then write or modify existing procedures for stopping and starting data collection and setting up parameters like units of time and run, running a trial in order to maximize our results. So that's the next slide. Yeah. So those pictures basically show that with this handheld device, students can automatically record data, pay more attention to the experiment, and not so much on what they're writing down. And then as soon as they're done with their data, they just tap the screen and convert all their data to a two-dimensional graph. So this was often taking place, like the students would go home with their data, and they write it all up, and they make a graph. Now they can do it within minutes in the lab. And not only can they graph, but they can also analyze. So that's what that second picture is. In addition to written materials, I researched and added appropriate digital resources within our written and online materials. So that could be online videos, YouTube videos that showed how to set up and use the equipment. There's a lot of things available. I didn't even have to make my own videos. This provided an additional resource to familiarize the students with materials and procedures that so that they could implement those as independent researchers on lab day. So they would be required to watch the videos before they came to lab, and then in addition to showing a demo or explaining how to use the equipment, they had a little background, and then they were just, you know, anything handheld and looked at the phone, and they're just so much easier. Less questions and a lot easier for them to work with. Finally, where needed, I created new data tables suitable for electronic data collecting in some areas, eliminating the need for individual data point reporting, and I put more emphasis on analysis interpretation. I wrote instructions for analysis detailing steps to use the LabQuest and to use the graphing and analysis portions so that they could easily and independently to curve fitting and find variables like slope and Y intercept. This facilitated the process using their data in order to explain the principles involved in the reactions they were running. In completion, students benefit from working with modern equipment, real-time analysis, and more opportunity to see the big picture of a reaction and ask more questions about the chemical processes they are doing. And I'm on the left screen. And speaking to the Inspection Resource Committee, Faculty Resource Center for Academic Excellence, and special thanks to Dr. Rose for all of her support.
Are there any questions?
I just, we had a couple. Thank you for the presentation. How long is it to these grants? So do the research. My first question was about LabQuest. Is that the program that was purchased, or did you have to buy equipment for that quest?
It's equipment. It's a little handheld device. And it's a unit, and the probes are all purchased separately. So you can purchase just one, you can purchase five, whatever suits your experiments. And I had experience with LabQuest. So when I saw that the department had them and wasn't really using them in the labs that I was working in, like, oh, let's put these into the, you know, into the curriculum.
It's fantastic. I think Dr. Rose was like totally, oh, let's do it. Yes, she is all on board for it for anything, but I think it's wonderful giving the students. I know our chemistry area needs fast improvements in the equipment, so this step is in the right direction and applying to doing this.
And I loved it because as equipment, the big funky equipment would start to break down, went from six to four to three. I was like,
This is so beneficial for the students. So thank you.
And we already had, nothing with the brand had to be purchased. It was already there. It was already there. Yeah, including those.
Are there any more questions? We just want to thank you very much for a very thorough presentation, and thank you for being innovative, helping lead our students and truly
Thank you so much.
Next level. So thank you. Congratulations. Our third presentation today. It's a tag team here. We have
It says me. It's just me.
Oh, all right. We have Shannon, me. No, no, there's no Shannon. It's Shannon. An assistant professor of nursing, presenting on her IRC grant topic. And let's see, is it entitled the same thing, enhancing student learning through evidence-based practice skills?
Yeah, me and my colleague, Breanna Law in O'Brien, did do the IRC grant, but she was working to make it today. So you're stuck with me.
That's great.
Okay.
Hello, everyone. I am a assistant professor in the nursing department. My primary, my primary role is in the lab, so I teach the nursing students and also masters all of their nursing skills. Started working in the lab about two and a half years ago, and actually went through the nursing program here, almost going on eleven years now. So it played a big role because when I started teaching the students, we were still using the same videos on nursing skills that I saw and watched eleven years ago to learn how to do things such as putting IVs in, you know, giving medication. And I was like, okay, some of this stuff is a little outdated. I think we need to, you know, do some changes. So me and my colleague, Breanna, we put in for an IRC grant, which we utilized to redo all of the nursing skills videos. Did that over the summer last year. So if you would go to the next slide, please. Thank you. So at SUNY Niagara, all students in the nursing program must be evaluated on and successfully perform all nursing skills prior to being able to do them in the clinical setting on real patients. An evaluation rubric is utilized to ensure that all students meet the certain criteria to pass these evals. Some of these skills include, like I said, inserting IVs, doing blood draws, wound dressing changes, passing medications, whether it's, you know, orally, injection, IV. It is imperative that our nursing skills are updated frequently and that we follow best practices. The healthcare field is forever changing, so we just need to stay on top of it and follow evidence-based practices. Next slide, please. So the problem we identified that initiated this IRC grant project was that the current nursing skills videos that we had were a bit outdated. And then I mean, online videos that nursing students could go and search, they didn't show the, you know, the equipment that we were using here at SUNY Niagara. And they also didn't all follow New York State practice. Different states have different nursing practices. So if they were just to, you know, simply go to YouTube and they've been putting IV in, you know, they could get multiple different results, not exactly how we are teaching them and how they should do it with our program. Next slide, please. Our goal was to record all of the nursing skills videos for all four semesters of the nursing program. Once we were able to record the videos, we then edited them. Well, my colleague, Breanna, did editing, which is not bad. Get fancy about editing videos. To ensure accuracy and ease of watching, the videos were posted to the nursing program's private YouTube page, which we then put onto BrainSpace so that all the students have easy access to it. All of our nursing faculty also have access to it, so that comes into play when we have nursing
we have nursing faculty who are doing these skills evaluations on these students. They can go and watch the videos just to make sure that they are all following the same rubric that we use, the same video these students are watching, just to ensure, you know, accuracy. The videos, they can watch as many times as they want. I can't tell you how many times I'm walking down the hallway in the nursing C building and I hear myself playing out videos. People got them on their phones. They're waiting to, you know, waiting outside the lab to do their skills eval, nervous, shaking, sweating. And I hear myself talking or Breanna talking and they're just replaying it over and over again. I've had a couple of people say that their kids actually don't read by name because they see me on, you know, their phone all the time. Next slide, please. I wanted to show you one of the videos that we did make. We made a total of thirty nine video. Some of them are up to thirty minutes in length. Each student gets thirty minutes to complete an evaluation, so that's why some of them are a bit long. This one is a two minute video.
This is the video for discontinuation of an NG tube.
Good morning. My name is Shannon.
And it's okay. Just glad I pulled up for you.
And I'm a student nurse with SUNY Niagara. Can I please have your name and date of birth?
Mike. This is the video for discontinuation of an NG tube.
Good morning. My name is Shannon. I'm a student nurse with SUNY Niagara. Can I please have your name and date of birth?
Mike Tyson, March twelfth, nineteen fifty-six.
Any allergies?
No.
Okay, we're just gonna try to get your nasal gastric tube out today.
Okay. Ensure that your patient is in high Fowler's position, apply clean gloves and goggles, and turn off suction. Disconnect NG tube from suction. Clamp for thirty minutes. Assess patient tolerance for symptoms of nausea, vomiting, cramping, as well as assessing for bowel sounds in all four quadrants. Insert air into the lumen and pigtail of the tube as per agency policy. Clamp the tube. Remove tape from nose and unpin from gown. Instruct patient to take a deep breath and hold. Pull tube out quickly, steadily and smoothly. Remove gloves. Perform hand hygiene and document appropriately. This concludes the video for discontinuation of NG tube.
So now that everyone else had to take that, the gastric tube, are there any questions? That's a longer video.
So you created thirty nine videos and what time spanned? Like did it take a year or?
Over the summer, over last summer. Yep. So we like, you know, we split it between the three months and just kept coming in and doing certain videos, certain days. And then Breanna did the editing, I want to say two, two months after the summer.
Any other questions? I just, thank you so much. Okay, at this point, we're going to move on. Thank you very much for the presentation today and our new staff mention. Appreciate it. So we're going to move now on to the consent agenda. And it's either all posted. Are there any questions on the consent agenda? Hearing none, I make a motion to approve the Board Minutes of August nineteenth, two thousand twenty-five, statement about revenues and expenditures and grant activities as presented. Second, thank you so much. All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
But he's saying no, and a abstentions. Hearing none, the motion is passed unanimously. Information items. Does anyone have any questions regarding the information items listed? Any questions at all? Hearing none, we're going to move on now to the Chairperson's report. And we had the privilege of going to the NYCCT Annual Conference at Saratoga Springs. Dr. Holmes, Trustee Tyler, and really with outstanding experience. And I'm just wondering if either one of you would like to make any comments about importance of the conference or anything that came out of it that you had.
Dr. Holmes, go ahead.
So, you know, I think having, having SUNY Niagara represent in NYCCT was extremely important. And I was very, very pleased that, that we had had three of our trustees in attendance. The meetings, as usual, were, were, were great. And I was very, very pleased in every meeting that, or meeting that I was in to be able to talk about our, our board's understanding of their roles and responsibilities and how, how our board governed. And so I was just so very pleased to be able to, to be there as a representative, as a, as a, as a fly on the wall for our board of trustees.
I thought it was wonderful that they, we had an opportunity to meet with the other colleges. And sometimes it's comforting to know that we share some of the same struggles, particularly in the nursing and allied health area, retaining faculty, that's a big conversation. And recruiting faculty, there was much talk about workforce changes that came around, you know, college grant opportunities, changes were made this past July. The SUNY Reconnect Program, we had an opportunity to sit down and inform and meet with our new Vice Chancellor for Community Colleges, which for thirty years was Johanna Duncan Partier. I mean, she was there forever, but her successor Valerie came in. It was really nice to be able to develop a relationship with somebody who's going to help in half that decision making and be able to speak for one-on-one. I took notes, which I'm not going to read through the notes, but I will share my notes with the rest of the board and the vice president because many of the issues deal with you or even phenomenal suggestions on how they're going to be dealing with some of the upcoming topics and just sharing ideas. So I just jotted down as much as I could. Finally, just really proud. And I want to give credit to Trustee Ross for reigniting and re-instituting the Awards Committee. Our two representatives, it's not just about Kevin, who did a wonderful job, and Ginny Taylor received a community award. It's not just about the awardee and the wonderful words they said about our college. It's a recognition that it brings to the college, the prestige to the college, the notoriety, the PR throughout the state. And Kevin and Ginny represented us so well. Congratulations to you on receiving those.
We also had in attendance Chancellor King. Again, he's been very visible in various events. We had the opportunity to have a discussion about upcoming issues that are being dealt with, possibly through the state budget and other issues that are relevant. It's just very important to have a connection that he's certainly not a stranger to SUNY Niagara and we certainly be very proud of our involvement with that. So. Kind of, yeah.
Was it the attendance? Did we have all our community colleges represented?
Didn't look like. There is a list. They did a roll call of all of the.
Because I think everybody has paid up their dues, right, Doctor? And all the community colleges that are up with their dues, our members.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, yeah, yes. And this is so important. And if any of the trustees have the opportunity in the time, it's well worth going to the state conference. Not only do you pick up new information that may help you help this college, but it also represents Niagara, SUNY Niagara. And I think that's awfully important. It's, it's well structured. So if you get the opportunity, have the time, make sure that you take that time to attend. I attended about six or seven of them. They were all good.
Yes, we agree with you, Trustee Ross. Thank you very, very much. We appreciate it. Second, I'd like to announce the, again, the scholarships are on October sixteenth, the NFCI. And I just hope that we get a good attendance. We do every year. Food is outstanding. Camaraderie is there. I think it's a good look for our college to be out there visibly and promoting all the great things that are going on here. As I say, the students vote with their feet. And that's, all of you deserve credit for our increased enrollment. And let's keep it going. So congratulations.
One other thing. Gail, are we going to have Mrs. Dr. Taylor come in and, you know, into one of our meetings? She's more than welcome. Maybe she'd like to say a few words because she won. Such a big honor there. I'll leave that up to you because that was your candidate. You did a great job.
What a great, great, great idea.
And I got my candidate here. All of y'all.
Thank you very, very much. And thirdly, our Veterans Day Ceremony and Reception, November tenth, two thousand twenty-five. It's at our new Veterans Memorial and it's very well attended. And I think it's also a very, very good look for our college. We have good representation there. That is a great tribute to all our people serving the country and domestically and abroad. So with that, we're going to move on to Dr. Holmes' report. And thank you, Dr. Holmes.
Thank you so much. In terms of the Veterans Day, we have asked Trustee Del Porto to be one of the speakers for that ceremony. So my hope is that the, that the board members will join to, to support Dr. Trustee Del Porto on that particular day. Our enrollment is, is looking fantastic at this point. As you know, we've started the semester off at eleven percent over what we were and but we always have melt. And so as of this morning, I think we were almost identical to where we were last year. We're a little over eight percent. So that's, that's expected. So we're, we're really, really pleased with that. And so with that, that includes six hundred and twenty-one students that are fully online students. If I'm not mistaken, is that correct? Along with a hundred eighty-seven students that we have enrolled in the SUNY Reconnect program. So, so we've done really, really well with SUNY Reconnect. I want to thank the, the trustees for attending the employee recognition ceremony yesterday. We recognize years of service. We recognize retirees. And we recognize a staff member who won the SUNY Chancellor's Award for classified service. And we had four trustees in attendance there yesterday. So we really appreciate anything that, anytime we have something and we see trustees there, we absolutely love it. It's great for, for the board. You're going to get an email in the next few days related to the requirement of New York State that all members of the Board of Trustees complete on an annual basis the sexual harassment training and that they acknowledge the, our policy on sexual harassment. So you should get an email communication in your personal email. We gave them your personal email accounts so that you can complete that training. So I'm going to out for that. I'm excited to inform the board that we have set aside Room A two sixty-six as the Board of Trustees room on the campus. We have cleared the room out, have double screen computers, and we have a phone line that's specifically for the Board of Trustees in that room. So I would ask that if you're going to use that room, that you please let Kristen know so that we don't have multiple individuals trying to use the room at the same time. And so it's in the, the very next suite of offices here, Room A two sixty-six. You, in order to sign into the computer, however, you'll need to use your, your SUNY Niagara email address to log into the computer and then you can do whatever else you need to do. But to log into the system, you'll need your SUNY Niagara email address. So that room is available for the board. We are, we were excited to have the Vice Chancellor, the new Vice Chancellor for Community Colleges, Valerie Dent, visit our campus on September eighth. She came and, and took a tour. We were able to, to talk to her about SUNY Reconnect. She was so excited. And when I saw her at the, at NYCCT, she continually talked about what a great visit she had at the college. And that if there's anything that we're doing, if there's an event we would like her to come to, please just reach out to her. She would absolutely love to come. And so, so we were glad to have, have Valerie here. I think all of you know, but you may not know by now, but I sent out in Sunday's update to the board. We were very, very excited to be informed by the National Science Foundation of an eight hundred sixty-two thousand, sixty-two dollar grant that, that we received for the grant application titled Advanced Manufacturing Program Modernization: To Better Prepare Future Technicians. And so we'll be working with SUNY and the state to see if we can leverage those dollars to turn that eight hundred sixty-two thousand dollars into more dollars for what a campus. So we're really excited about that. I want to, want to thank our grants office for their work on this. Brady Barnes was instrumental in it. And there was one other faculty member, I think, that was instrumental in it. So Porta Village Anthony Bernura. So that was quite a few folks that worked on this. And for us as a community college to receive this grant, it's just exceptional. So, so we could not have asked for, for a better outcome. The next thing that I want to do is, is that we know that we have a new interim chief of police on campus. And, and he came into my office yesterday and talked about the support that the President's Office, as well as the Board of Trustees gives to, to public safety here on campus. And so he would like to make a quick, a quick presentation to the board that I said he could do during, during mine.
Hello. I want to, we appreciate, this is something that you want to pass along. Chief Anibal and I were working on before you retired, sir. What it is, is it's a challenge coin from our department, law enforcement department. It served in military law enforcement. Kind of bought into it being a paramilitary organization. So traditionally, you give them to your officers for a job, what are on, for dedication. But we also give them to people outside our department that give us support. And Trustee Virtue, also I didn't forget you. I have a coin for you. When you're on campus next, I'll give it to the president. But we just wanted to present it to you as a thank you for your support as we've started and went down the process to having law enforcement on campus. Obviously, it was a heavy lift. We needed your support to make it happen and on a day-to-day basis. So thank you.
Thank you very much.
I have the question. Has somebody told you about my driving? And is this gonna help?
But it is, it's called the challenge coin. But you're supposed to keep it with you. If you're challenged and you don't have it, you have to buy around a drink. So they're not about getting out of the ticket, but you don't carry it. You make a challenge, but.
Thanks for coming.
And then I want to want to conclude my my update by extending condolences to trustee Smith. Her, on the passing of her uncle Leon Smith's wife, Betty, on September 7th. And there were members of of the college that attended the ceremony on Saturday to represent the board and and the college uh, and the foundation. Leon Smith has been on on the college's foundation for quite some time. And prior to that, Betty served on the foundation board. And so uh, so we want to extend our condolences to.
Can Doctor E was one of 137. That was the first graduate. We never can forget that.
And that concludes my report.
All right. So we're moving now on to our student trustee report. Um, and student trustee Zimador will provide her report.
Uh, we had a successful first week of classes. I walked in on September 2nd to a very exciting atmosphere at the college. It was also really wonderful to see Dr. Holmes, along with many other employees and administrators in the learning common and at NFCI during the first week greeting students, helping them find their classes and answer questions. It was very well received by students. And I know a lot of them were excited to see the president. The students were also taking advantage of the complimentary refreshments and treats provided, as well as the C-NAGA t-shirts being given out. And I heard many students commenting that they appreciated appreciated them being thanked. And one suggestion I would say and offer is that we would just possibly use better signage next year. As a lot of students didn't know that the shirts could be given given away in a complimentary and just walking right past without grabbing one. So I'm just planning on bringing the suggestion to student life into the foundation. So something that could possibly be done next year. And overall, student life and the foundation did a wonderful job on Welcome Week. And I'm excited for the upcoming events planned throughout the school. And in other news, student government is in the process of interviewing candidates for the officer positions for the 2025-2026 school year. And I'm looking forward to meeting the new team and. And there definitely seems to be an interest in these positions as both Jordan from student life and I were recently asked about availability. And the bowling alley is getting renovated. The floor is getting replaced. New black lights are being added and the walls are getting painted. And there's no set date. I want to be finished, but I do believe it is soon because the Instagram posts is like a lot of progress. And I definitely suggest walking by and peeking in because it's looking really good so far. Uh, athletics, women's volleyball and men's and women's club soccer are in full swing. Both soccer teams are set to play at home this weekend against Sunset Valley, which passed. And women's volleyball has played three games against Monroe, Bowlin, Montgomery, and Jefferson, which all unfortunately ended. And our art center will be exhibiting reference, which is a series of drawings of LGBTQ plus elders. And the exhibit will run from September 16th to October 15th. And the work is honestly incredible. I looked at a few of them. And the opening reception with the artist took place earlier today at 1 o'clock, but you can review the exhibit any anytime.
If anyone have any questions. It's not important. Thank you so much. And now we're going to move on to our faculty observer report and Dr. Melissa Sacks. I like that. I like Katie better.
It's nice to be back. It's nice to be back and all semester starting. Ah, it's beautiful and it's busy. So for faculty, after new week advisement, sorry, sorry, new student advisement for the robust fall upswing. Faculty have launched classes and I ran into one who's asked me how I was doing. And I asked her what he was doing. And she said, it's the same as always. It's like gracefully falling down the stairs. You know, you can't help but you plunge into whatever situation, but you have to do it gracefully. And so that's that's what our ingenious faculty do their best to do. Program coordinators have aided in recruitment of adjunct faculty and are attending to typical challenges of startup. I ran into one who's Josh Wagner, who's in charge of the jail program. And how is it going, Josh? She said, well, it was great that over the summer you hadn't heard from somebody important at the jail. And so pursued it up the chain and finally, 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 got everything squared away. I think, you know, hours before the first class was set to start. So uh, like Kelly and like Shannon and Brienne, you can be very sure that faculty are dedicated and juiced off to a good start. So normal programming has also gotten underway with shows being slated. The Dulce Volvo Hellbets opening today, its first beautiful reception. Faculties, some of them were able to participate in college promotion peach festival. Many others are already preparing for open houses. There was a uh, a club fair at which faculty were robustly present to help students to go into ballroom clubs. So the cinephiles club's film series is up and running. The Reading Matters series will have its first meeting on Thursday. Um, the promotion and technicality of revision team is busy, busy, busy. We had a 50-minute discussion today during the X-Fon meeting. And it was robust and we're not quite sure whether it's coming to Senate. But it well may, and it has been, and and it would be for, if so, possibly the revision could take place for this year. And what an amazing thing. So thanks, thanks to the team who's been busy all summer and to the efforts that are so, that are ongoing and so highly bound. So grateful to have the opportunity to do this revision. So it's been collegial, it's been shared governance, it's been everything. And hopefully it will also be successful. But in any case, it's been this year. But it's been wonderful and nail-biting to be a part of. So let's see, governance is being launched, as I just mentioned. We're sort of off and running. Uh, so we are very happy and grateful. Uh, course reduction happened. One per year for both the secretary and the vice president's sessions. So they are no longer doing it for just a small stipend in one case and out of charity in the other case. But we're able to rent real room in each other's heads, as we put it, to have a couple of extra meetings a week to strategize about how really to keep on evolving this wonderful direction in shared governance that we embarked upon so happily with Lloyd at the helm of the college. So the first meeting of the college council is being planned. Two initiatives are slated so far. The first meeting will be in October. Overarching matters continue to be ongoing with the strategic plan and its upcoming stages. And along with significant and pressing concerns that affect us all. And AI is just on the front burner of everyone's imagination and experience. And I know you're going to hear a lot about it at places like the NCTE and and others. And there isn't a single narrative, I think, that really encompasses everything, not even close. Uh, it is something that my colleagues in English routinely say to me, my students in 101, maybe 102, loathe AI. They they want to learn the skills. Now, I wouldn't say that my students necessarily loathe it, but I do know that they need to learn the skills. So that it can't be a replacement for such things as really learning to write or really learning stuff. Dr. Ross, I'm talking about statistics. He wouldn't have traded the experience of going through the brain, doing that. So um, anyway, it's it's important. It's ongoing. And even the other day, on the 28th, we heard, and I was funny, you know, we heard that turnitindotcom and other detection services are not useful anymore because it can be humanized. AI can be humanized. And oh, what a depressing thing. But on the 27th, apparently, turnitindotcom did manage to upgrade and attend to humanization AI. So I got that alert on my computer as I started grading my first set of online live class essays. So it's a brave new world, but we're in there doing our best to discern. Uh, so if you ever hear that faculty are dinosaurs and resistant or looking the other way, that is not the case at SUNY. So don't let anybody tell you. So after that heavy note, on a lighter note, Professor Julian Masako, coordinator of the education program, received an employee spotlight award. And I got to sit next to her last night at one of Dr. Holmes's dinner with six strangers. And so thanks for that. I don't know how he keeps up such a busy schedule. I feel hungover. I only have one glass of wine. So that's it. Thank you.
So we're um, gonna now turn over to committee reports. I do want to thank trustee Clark for filling in with me while I was stuck in trial at work. So I really appreciate that. Um, so we'll start with our academic student life committee and chairperson Sacks.
Thank you. Um, items discussed at the academic student life committee meeting are shown in the minutes from our September 3rd, 2025 meeting. A copy is provided in your materials. Are there any questions at this time? And I trust everyone was able to read and review the crisis communication plan. Are there any questions for Vice President Delos? None? So I make a motion to approve the crisis communication plan as presented. Any seconds? Questions? Motion carried. And then the next academic student life committee meeting will be held on Wednesday, October 1st at 8 o'clock AM. And that concludes my report.
Thank you very much. So now we'll move it over to our fiscal committee and chairperson Pylek.
Thank you. Items discussed at the fiscal committee meeting are shown in the minutes from September 3rd. A copy is provided in your materials. Are there any questions? Seeing none. Um, the business and finance report, is it included in your materials? And Vice President Durante, do you want to add anything since our meeting?
Um, sure. Thank you. Financially, we're still doing a great job. Our expenses are below budget and our revenue is above budget. And that's all I want to say. I do want to share real quickly that my administration division is much more than business and finance. And a lot of what we do is 24/7. So we have facilities. And facilities includes building maintenance, uh, infrastructure, uh, grounds. Uh, Steve Kite is here and and Steve and his crew and his colleagues. Uh, we have almost 300 acres here. Whenever you drive by, at least for me, for the short time I've been here, it's pristine inside and outside. So our crew, Steve and his colleagues, they do a great job. Public safety, our interim chief, Terry Gill, and his team, they keep our campus safe, our students safe, and our visitors safe, and our faculty safe, and our staff safe. Uh, and then Office of Information Technology keeps everybody humming and the academic world humming. And then business and finance with John Eichner and accounting with Kelsey. So I have a great team and a lot goes on behind the scene and much of it is 24/7. So it's more than just business and finance. But I wanted an opportunity to share that with you as well. Thank you.
Okay, um, the next fiscal committee meeting is Wednesday, October 1st at 2 PM. Thank you.
Thank you so much. We'll turn it over to our awards committee and Chair Kristen Ross.
Thank you, Adam Chairperson. Yeah, the items discussed at the awards committee meeting are shown in the minutes from September 3rd, 2025. A copy is provided in your materials. Are there any questions? I just like to add one thing, like I always add one thing, is certainly the leadership of the foundation attended our meeting on September 3rd. And because they worked very closely with the awards committee, I'm sure what we were trying to do with the trustee emeritus will work out very well, Adam Chairperson. Are there any questions there? Thank you very much.
Um, and so that's the completion for our committees. So I'm going to make a motion to go into executive session under provisions of section 105, Article 7 of the public officer's law. Is there a second? Trustee Clark, any questions?